Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 12th, is called to order. Welcome to tonight's virtual Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Due to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic, the city is taking steps to ensure the health and safety of our and our employees. So all attendance in person by members of the public will be prohibited. Instead, we've invited the public to submit comments via email and staff will read them during this meeting. In addition, this meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook, which is accessible for all members of the public, even if they do not have Facebook. Email address is publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. That has been set up for the public to send their comments for the meeting. Publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. Staff is monitoring this email and will read any comments received for each item according to the three-minute time limit. Commissioner, please turn off your microphones or your video during the presentation to avoid interruption. Any attendees, if any attendees other than the commissioner, including applicants, please turn off your video to avoid any interruptions or distractions to the public. All votes will be a roll call vote, and I will call for each commissioner for any questions at the appropriate time during this hearing. With that, Madam Secretary, will you please note the roll or call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison is present. Commissioner Clymer is present. Commissioner Kish is present. Commissioner Maloney is present. Chairman Bray is present. Vice Chairman Barnes is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. With that, can I get a motion to excuse Vice Chairman Barnes from this evening's meeting, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the absence of Chairman Barnes.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Ellison, to excuse Vice Chairman Barnes from this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? Proceed to the vote. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passive.
Thank you. Now's the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Were there any emails or speaker cards received from the public on any non-agenda items, Alyssa?
We've not received any speaker cards or email.
Again, any comments can go to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. At this point in time, this is the opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communications that may have had prior to the meeting, and I will simply go through the list. Commissioner Clymer?
No.
Commissioner Maloney?
No.
Commissioner Steiner?
No.
Commissioner Ellison?
No.
Commissioner Kish?
No.
At this time, this is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communications. At this time, we will go into the public hearing, and I will open the public hearing for the use permit for the convenience use of the financial institution with a drive-through. And Steve will present on this evening's agenda item, agenda item number two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a use permit for a financial institution. Property is located here. It's the southwest corner of McDowell and Pebble Creek. The center is the Pebble Creek Marketplace. Initially zoned in 2007, amended in 2014. All this area designated for commercial use. Again, we also have existing commercial centers to the east and to the north, and then here's a tent to the south. And so with the Pebble Creek Marketplace, we have this commercial center within this commercial area. As per the Pebble Creek Marketplace PAD, it lists two institutions for the drive-through as required in use permit. So that current request before you tonight is that use permit for convenience use, the financial institution with the drive-through. That parcel, 1.21 acres, and the user is Sun West Federal Credit Union. They proposed about a 4,500 square foot building with the drive-through facility. The building's been designed to match the center. The approved materials and colors are approved with the Pebble Creek Marketplace. They're also providing parking on-site in excess of minimum requirements. This is the proposed site plan that was submitted with the use permit. Again, this pad sits in between the existing circle fate to the north and the care grid facility to the south. Here, all these drives existing, and they will access from those existing drives here on the south and to the north. Vehicle circulation will wrap around the building. They'll enter the drive-through on the west side of the building, wrap around the south side, and then exit. And these are the proposed building elevations. Again, the building materials, the colors comply with the Pebble Creek Marketplace PAD. The one exception is this copper metal accent panel that the applicant requested for their corporate architecture with Sun West Federal. The application did comply with our citizen review process. A notice was mailed to surrounding property owners and stakeholders. No public inquiries were received from that notice. As a use permit, this require to go through the public hearing process that does require recommendation from the commission, then approval from the council. For the public hearing, we post the property, place the legal ad in the paper, and again, another mailing to surrounding property owners and stakeholders. We also placed this application on our current development applications website where the public could obtain information and plans on the developer. But to date, staff has not received any public inquiries as a result of any of this public notice. After reviewing this application, we do find that it will have no materially detrimental effects, that it'll be compatible with the surrounding uses in the area, and it also meets the requirements for convenience uses. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the street with three stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. The applicant is on the line and available for any questions.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Before we leave you and your presentation, I would just ask, is there any questions for staff at this time regarding this application?
No.
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 None.
None.
Okay, we will, the applicant is on the phone, and so we will turn to the applicant. And does the applicant wish to address the commission at this time?
Not at this time. It seems like we've tried to comply and have complied with all the requests, and hopefully we can approve and get the drawings in for permit.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
None.
No.
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 Alyssa, are there any emails or speaker cards received on this item?
We've not received any speaker cards or email.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion on agenda item number two, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 20-300-00003 with the three stipulations.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve 20-300-00003, the financial institution with drive-through, open, with the drive-through with the staff stipulations. Are there, is there any discussion from the commission?
No.
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 Hearing none. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passive.
Thank you, Alyssa. Moving right along to agenda item number three. This is the rezoning of MF24 multifamily with a PAD overlay. And it looks like Steve will be presenting for us again.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Alyssa, for keeping me on track. I will open the public hearing. Now on to you, Steve.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. Our next presentation is a rezoning of our project called Cabana on Bullard. That property here again, Bullard Avenue, Van Buren, about 10, well over 10 acres located right here, northwest corner. We have existing light industrial to the north, Skyway Church to the west, a proposed high-density residential and commercial property to the south, proposed data center properties also to the south. And here we have a mix of kind of flex commercial to the east. A general plan, as this property designates it as business and commerce, it also has a transit-oriented development overlay over that, which encourages high-density residential development. Existing zoning for the property, it's part of a larger PAD, called Australia View Estates. That was zoned in 1998. And a mix of uses. The properties, west of Bullard Wash were residential. East of the wash, you had a mix of light industrial and commercial with the subject property designated as general commercial. Back in 2008, there was a site plan for a commercial center approved. However, the center never developed, and the site plan has since exploded. So the current request tonight, the applicant would like to rezone that 10 acres from the PAD commercial to multifamily with the PAD overlay. And the PAD overlay does request several deviations to city standards, and those include deviations to the density, the parking, setbacks, and landscape area with the applicant's intent to create more urban, higher-density type development on the project. This is the proposed layout of the development. And this is Van Buren, Bullard here. It'll basically be five pods of buildings with the applicant having the buildings closer to the street, again, for that more urban dense feel. Inside will be themed community amenities, so residents are free to access any one of the pods. The main amenity area will be here where you have the pool and the clubhouse area. They have set up three points of access. The primary access will be here from Van Buren at this median break, entry and exit. They'll also have two exit onlys, one here further to the west onto Van Buren, and another one here onto Bullard. This is the proposed architecture of the site. Again, applicant trying to bring larger building mass to the street more modern than that. As the public hearing, they did comply with the citizen review process. A notice was mailed to surrounding properties. We did receive one note of opposition, which was included in your packet. As a rezoning, it does require review through the public hearing process. And again, that requires a recommendation from the commission and approval from the council. All notice was provided. The property was posted, the legal ad placed in the paper, and a mailing to surrounding property owners and stakeholders. Also, this item was included on our websites for so the public could access plans and information on the project. To date, we have not received any public inquiries as a result of the notice provided for the public hearing. Our findings after reviewing this application, we do find a rezoning is consistent with the general plan that will be compatible with the surrounding area. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the 12 stipulations that are in the draft ordinance attached to the property. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my portion of the presentation. The applicant is on the line and available for questions or presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. Before we move on from Steve, and since he's got his PowerPoint up, is there any questions from the commission for staff?
I have one.
I have one too.
Okay, Commissioner, was that Commissioner Clymer or Steiner? Clymer. Go ahead.
Steve, you said that there was a one note of opposition, and in the packet, all it said was the, it was an email that you'd received, and they just requested that a no vote be taken. Is that, is that all there was to that letter?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, yes, that was all there was to it. There was no reasoning provided and no follow-up provided. So that was the extent of the opposition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maloney?
Yes, um, it says that it's for multifamily use, but is that condos or is it apartments?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, the intent is apartments for rent.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission for staff at this time?
I do have another question.
Proceed, please.
So it, you said in your presentation that it is consistent with the surrounding areas. And I'm seeing, you know, the Vantage Data Centers and the Goodyear Airport and that kind of thing. It seems like a peculiar location for a residential area when you've got commercial, you know, the, the commercial center. I think we're probably familiar with that behind it or the commerce center behind it. Is there any plans, and we may have covered this in previous, but I don't remember anything on the southwest corner that, is, that's a data center as well, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, southwest corner here of the Goodyear Airport Commons. They're right adjacent to Van Buren. It looks like they had zoning for a mix of commercial and multifamily, high-density residential. But then further south, then you started the potential data center developments, and that pretty much went all the way down to Yuma Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, hearing then, we'll move over to the applicant. Does the applicant wish to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is Ed Bull representing Greenlight. If you can hear me, please say so, because I can't tell if you can or cannot hear me.
We can hear you, Ed.
Very good. Thank you. As I indicated, I'm representing Greenlight. We certainly appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We accept stipulations one through 12 without modification of any of them. We actually have a PowerPoint that we can go through if you want, but I do believe that Steve in his staff report and also in his presentation has covered the highlights. Part of what I want to emphasize is that there is a tremendous number of amenities that are being provided within the quadrangles that Steve referenced during his presentation. And we can go into as much as that or other things if you want. As you may recall, Greenlight is no stranger to the city of Goodyear. They are a part of the Civic Square at Australia Falls Mixed Use PAD and look forward to being a part of this kind of mixed-use intersection at Bullard and Van, Bullard and Van Buren. If you want a presentation, I'll be happy to give it. If you are comfortable with staff's recommendation and stipulations and plan to approve, I'm also happy to be quiet and let you proceed. So I, in good faith, ask you to let me know if I should keep talking or be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Appreciate it. Do miss seeing you in person. Is there any questions from the commission, or is there any commissioner that wishes to see Mr. Bull's presentation this evening?
No.
No.
No, thank you.
All right, it sounds, uh, sounds like you got off the hook pretty easy, Ed.
Thank you.
With that, I will ask, Alyssa, are there any speakers, cards, or emails to be read on this particular item?
We've not received any speaker cards or email.
Okay. That being said, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion on the rezoning of MF24 multifamily with PAD overlay for the Cabana on Bullard.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept item number 20-200-00004.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Kish, to approve the agenda item 20-200-00004, the rezoning of MF24 multifamily with the PAD overlay for the Cabana on Bullard with staff recommendations. That being said, is there any discussion from any of the commission members?
No.
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 Hearing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passive.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four, this is the Paseo Place parcel rezon. And I will open the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Alex to present on this one, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Commission members, good evening. My next two items are for the same project. So I would like to request to combine those presentations for the sake of time.
Please do, Alex. Go ahead and do that unless there is any commissioner that objects. But I think unless I hear anything, please move forward and do both.
Thank you. So the Paseo Place property is formerly known as Paseo Place Parcel II. If we look at the, I show you this map, catty corner northwest of the Paseo Place property in question tonight is the former Paseo Place Parcel I. We have worked with the developer, and they're moving forward to incorporate this parcel into the law-provved development to keep that consistent. So moving forward, this will be known as just Paseo Place. There's 80 acres included within the property. It is located at the southeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue. The current zoning is R16, and there is a stipulation that does have a PAD attached to it, so it doesn't meet today's city standards. The request tonight is to apply the reduced R14 district that's included in the city zoning ordinance. And with that, there are designer, design elements that are required in doing so. So for amenity elements, there's two required, which the applicant has demonstrated by providing a full-size basketball court and pickleball court. And in addition, lighting the sports court, sport courts, which does, both of those items do exceed the minimum requirement for park standards. For connectivity elements, there's four required and four provided. So there is extensive trails within the Paseo Place development. These are publicly accessible trails, and it does include access to the Maricopa Trail. So a county trail has, is adjacent to this property, adding more to the element. The lot diversity element is being achieved by providing at least 30% of the lots at 40, or excuse me, 50 feet wide. The minimum lot size within Paseo Place is 45 feet, so that does meet the city zoning ordinance requirement. Additionally, there's no subdivision perimeter wall, which does allow for that public trail access and doesn't enclose the property. And according to the general plan, this is an infill development site, so they do receive a point for that. For streetscape requirements, the applicant has provided detached sidewalks. There are alternative paving materials at the entrances to really enhance the entry of the community. They are proposing decorative streetlights, and this is a newer additional amenity that staff is recommending approval of. I put a little clip of it here. We are focusing on the West Goodyear theming, so if you look at the Los Brisas community, there's a similar element at the entryway of the community, so we are granting a point for that. Like I mentioned, this is combining the presentation for the preliminary plat. So just a quick overview, like I mentioned, 80 acres, 295 lots. And just for reference, the original preliminary plat and zoning did cap the lots within the community at 214 lots. So there is an increase of 81 lots within the proposal. There are 22 tracks for open space, and the applicant has demonstrated, as I mentioned, the compliance with those required design elements. In terms of public participation, according to the mayor's emergency declaration, staff did provide the proper public notification with postcards, signage, and a newspaper ad. The applicant did provide their own packets out to the adjacent property owners. They provided an information sheet, and they also provided a postcard which notified the property owners that they could attend a Zoom, virtual Zoom meeting, which no one actually attended, but that was, that was going beyond what we currently require. And that was held on July 9th, and to date, staff nor the applicant have received any feedback regarding the request. All that being said, the applicant has demonstrated the requirements of the zoning ordinance and engineering standards for both rezon and preliminary plat, and the applicant is on the phone and can present for you or answer any questions as well as myself. That concludes my presentation, Chairman, and questions? Happy to answer questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for Alex at this time from the commission regarding this project?
No.
No.
I had a question, Chairman.
Commissioner Kish, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. Alex, is this higher density of single-family homes than typical? Or, I mean, percentage-wise of homes per open tract of land? This feels really dense and kind of pushed together. Is that, it might be? pushed together. Is that, it might be the picture I'm looking at. Can you give me some insight into that?
Chairman, Commissioner Kish, thanks. Thank you for your question. This is the, the lot sizes are what we are seeing more of. So, with that being said, given the property, the acreage, it is meeting the typical, it's not exceeding the three to four dwelling units that we typically see.
Thank you, Alex.
Any other questions for Alex at this time?
No.
Hearing none, I understand the applicant is on the line. Does the applicant wish to address the commission at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed Bull, the good news is you still can't see my face. The good news is, if you allow me to do so, I will be very brief, hoping my brevity is rewarded. I'm representing Melkor, the owner of the property. They've worked hand and glove with staff in taking this development and making it fit well within your R14 criteria and incentive criteria as well. As you may know, Melkor's been in business a long time. They're no stranger to Arizona. They've, as I've indicated, are very pleased with staff's recommendations on both rezoning and on the preliminary plat. They accept zoning stipulations 1 through 20 and pre-plat stipulations 1 through 22. On this case, I also have a PowerPoint if you want to see it. Anticipating you'd rather not see it, I am happy to waive further comment unless anyone on the commission wants me to make a presentation. We request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for Mr. Bull, or does anyone wish to see his presentation?
No.
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 Nope.
Okay. Again, Ed, you got off easy. We should probably do these more virtual meetings than in person.
I'm all for that.
We will, what we'll do here is, we will, or actually, before I do that, Alyssa, is there any public comments on agenda item number four or emails?
I've not received any speaker cards or emails.
Okay, so what I will do then is I will close the public hearing on that and ask for a motion from the commission, please.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we pass 202000002 for the Paseo Place Parcel II rezone.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve agenda item 20-2000002, Paseo Place Parcel II rezone with staff stipulations. Are there any, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, this is the preliminary plat for Paseo Place. You've already seen the presentation from Alex, and you've heard from Mr. Bull. What I'll do is, is there any questions from any of the commissioners for either staff or Mr. Bull on this particular agenda item? Or do you need to see anything, or can we move along?
We can move along.
Okay. That being said, I'll just double-check with Alyssa. We have any emails or speakers cards?
No, we have not received any.
That being said, then, I will move into a motion from the commission, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move on item number 20500-003.
One more.
One more zero?
Yep.
0003. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve agenda item 20500003, the preliminary plat for Paseo Place. Is there any discussion?
No.
All right, hearing and seeing none. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Good evening. Agenda number six, agenda, item number six, excuse me, preliminary plat for El Cidro Parcel IV and V, and we are going on to Alex, please.
Thank you again, Chairman. My next item is the preliminary plats, as you mentioned, for parcels IV and V of El Cidro. The zoning for parcel V was amended to allow for single-story multifamily development in August of 2019, known as the Vida at El Cidro PAD. The area in this proposed preliminary plat is located on the east side of Cotton Lane with Lower Buckeye to the north and Elwood Street to the south. The Vida property is the southern portion of the property. These parcels are part of the original preliminary plat for the entire El Cidro development, which consists of about 328 acres. In the original preliminary plat, which was extended in 2014, the original preliminary plat, these two parcels were connected in this highlighted area. So, since the Vida development is combining the parcels, which you'll see on this next slide, combining this parcel into one piece and replacing that roadway with additional lots on the north on parcel IV, we did incorporate parcel IV into this preliminary plat. The preliminary plat does meet the zoning ordinance and engineering requirements, and the applicant is on the line. That does conclude my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant also can present any additional information if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. A great presentation, as usual. And before we go on, is there any questions for Alex at this time regarding this particular preliminary plat?
No.
I guess I do have one question.
That sounds like Commissioner Ellison?
Sure, Kish can go if he needs to. That's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Kish?
Yeah. Alex, will there be another way of connecting parcel V to parcel IV in the future, or is they going to be two separate entities?
Chairman, Commissioner Kish, thank you. There, these, parcel IV and parcel V will not be connected. They'll each have their own points of access, parcel V off of Elwood and Cotton Lane, and then parcel IV off of Cotton Lane and Lower Buckeye, but nothing connecting the two together, since this will be a private multifamily development.
All right, thank you, Alex.
Commissioner Ellison?
So, my question is, I guess, the renderings of the homes that were scheduled for this area, it looks like other parcels that are being built in another location of Goodyear that we saw not too long ago. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Commissioner. These elevations were included in the PAD for Vida at El Cidro, which was presented to you in August of 2019, oh, a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, hearing none. I understand the applicant is on the phone, and does the applicant wish to address the commission or have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is Benjamin Tate from Witty Morris on behalf of the applicant. This is a fairly straightforward request, so I don't have any additional comments at this time unless there are any questions from members of the commission, but I would like to thank Alex and staff for working with us so closely on this to get us to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Benjamin, is there any, are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
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 Okay.
No.
Hearing none. Are there any speakers cards or comments to be read at this time?
We've not received any, we've not received any speaker cards or email.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I will take a motion on the preliminary plat for El Cidro.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we pass number 19-500-00010 for the preliminary plat for the El Cidro Parcel IV and V.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Kish to approve item number 19-500-00010, preliminary plat for El Cidro Parcel IV and V. Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, hearing none. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. On to agenda number seven, this is the preliminary plat for Cotton Flower Marketplace, lots 1A through 4 and 6 through 9, and Katie's going to present on this one.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Sorry, I'm not as quick with the technology as everyone else. As was stated, this is a preliminary plat for Cotton Flower Marketplace. The development is located at the southwest corner of Yuma Road and Cotton Lane. It is an existing partially-developed shopping center. Previously, there was a minor land division, which is an administrative process completed for the project. However, there is a limit on how many lot splits you can do administratively. Since they hit that, they now have to go through the preliminary final plat process to further subdivide the property. So, the area marked as Lot 1 and this parcel to the north, I'm sorry, the area marked as Lot 1 was previously part of a minor land division, but it is not included in the preliminary plat before you. You can see the red is the outline of the preliminary plat area, and there are two parcels that are not included. This preliminary plat would further subdivide the property, as you can see, creating nine lots in total. All these lots would meet our development standard setbacks and minimum lot sizes. We have found the preliminary plat to be in conformance with all city codes and regulations, and therefore, we recommend approval, and I'm sorry, this says council because we were getting it ready for council. We do recommend approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that. Is there any questions for Katie at this time?
No.
I didn't know if you said this without Katie, but is the applicant on the line, and does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Yeah, I am not sure if the applicant is on the line, so if the applicant is here.
Okay, they are here?
No, I think they got disconnected.
Okay. No worries. Alyssa, are there any public comments or emails on this particular item?
We've not received any emails or speaker card.
Okay, thank you. With that, any final questions from the commission for staff?
No.
All right, then, we will move, continue on, and I will take a motion for agenda number seven, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 20500001.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Ellison, to approve the preliminary plat for Cotton Flower Marketplace lots 1A through 4 and 6 through 9 with staff stipulations. Are there any, is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Alyssa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Now, on to staff communication. I assume that Chris will probably update us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. I'm going to actually turn the first part of the presentation over to Katie. She has a really exciting announcement that we're proud to make tonight.
Thank you. We're happy, I know it's difficult to tell, but we're happy to introduce our new Planner One. Her name is Guadalupe Ortiz Cortez. She goes by Lupe. So, she's been here at the meeting, observing the meeting tonight. So, there she is. So, we are very excited to have her on board as a new staff member, and so she will probably be making presentations to you in the future. So, please welcome Lupe.
Welcome, Lupe.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Just, Lupe, what's, just briefly, can you tell us your background and where you came from? Do you have experience prior to?
Yes, of course. I just graduated from Arizona State University this past May with my master's in urban and environmental planning. I have a bachelor's in regional planning from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. My family is in southeastern Pennsylvania. I moved to Arizona to attend ASU, and I fell in love with Arizona, and I decided to stay here, and I'm very blessed to have this opportunity with the city of Georgia.
Well, thank you, Lupe, again. Welcome, and definitely excited to have you. Glad you chose Arizona.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, that's a good, that's going to be hard to top, Chris, but do you got anything else for us?
Well, I have a little bit of mundane stuff, and then even a better, I don't want to say better, I don't mean it like that, Guadalupe, I'm sorry, but another exciting announcement as well. So, just to update the commission on the results of the cases that you have considered previously, as we typically do during this time. If you remember, the planning commission met in regular session last time on, seems like a lifetime ago now, July 1, and all of these particular cases that you considered at that meeting rolled over to the council meeting that took place a little bit later that month. The, I think it was July 13 is the date. So, all of these cases were approved by council, and they included the plat for Hudson Commons Residential Development south of Van Buren on the west side of Australia Parkway. The Hancock Communities rezoning, which was south of I-10 on the west side of 303, that's the single-family rental project. The council also approved the drive-through for the future Starbucks at I-10 on Litchfield Road, and then the council also, and we were really pleased about this, approved those various text amendments. And then the council also, and we were really pleased about this, approved those various text amendments, zoning ordinance text amendments that we had been working on related to walls and other things related to historic Goodyear for carports and things of that nature. So we're really happy that council supported not only staff, but planning commission's recommendation on those particular cases. And then last but not least, they also approved the use permit for the drive-through restaurant to be located in front of where Aldi is getting constructed on Australia Parkway. And if you'll bear with me, because like Katie, I'm not really great with technology, I want to share one thing for you. You know, we have a really great and innovative, not only building, but city culture. And I can't say how pleased and humbled and honored I am to work with such talented people that we have in our, in our department, people such as Katie and Alex and Steve. And Guadalupe, I feel absolutely certain is going to continue this long line of tradition that we have in Goodyear, really talented and very innovative thinkers. And as a result of the improvements that we've made in the development review process and how that we have applied lean thinking in, in improving our processes and collaborating with our sister departments and so forth, Katie and I were asked by the American Planning Association with Alyssa's help, and by the way, she did most of the work on this. We actually were asked to write an article about Goodyear's experiences, how we did it and are still doing it, and the outcomes. And so this passed, and I'm going to share it here. This is an email blast because, you know, that's the way that things are these days. But it was published in one of our national professional publications called, it's done by the American Planning Association. It's called the Planning Advisory Service. And you can see a picture right in broad center here of the future civic square. And it really talks about what we did in order to improve, improve our processes in order to slow down, we slowed down in, in order to speed up, how we improved our processes with lean. And so although myself and Katie and Alyssa were the ones that really wrote the article, and this has been distributed to our forty thousand professional members across the country and internationally, it's not so much about me and Katie and Alyssa as much as it is the culture and the talented people that we have here at the city and our commitment to, to do the right thing, have tremendous customer service, and also at the same time, build a community that we can all be proud of. So this is really quite an achievement, and I want to recognize Katie for all of her leadership with, with this. And I just wanted the commission to be aware, this is really something that doesn't happen very often. And it's something that not only we should be proud of, but the city should be proud of. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chris. I think that it is obviously very well deserved. I know that our staff works incredibly hard and, and has made quite a few changes even since I've been on board, which seems to be forever now. But that being said, if you would please, Chris, that, I guess, just the article to the commission members. I, I know I would like to just read it to see what it has to say. But you all are to be commended, and thank you for, for what you do to make everything work. It's, I think, I know, speaking for myself, it is certainly an honor and a privilege to work with good people and serve on this commission.
Here, here.
Congrats.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be happy to send it out, Mr. Chairman. No problem at all. Thank you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any questions for Chris or staff at this time before we wrap this up?
No.
Okay, that being said, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on September sixteenth, 2020, at six PM. There being no further business, this meeting is, oh, Commissioner Clymer, you have something? Weren't we requested to see if we could have another one later this month? What, what happened to that one? Oh, that's correct. We were. We were.
Twenty-six.
Or Alyssa, are we doing a meeting on the twenty-six? That's, my script says sixteen, so.
Thank you. Yes, that was my error. Katie?
Yes, we will. I appreciate you making the time to hold the special meeting. We will be discussing the redevelop, city's redevelopment plan. And so we need the special meeting because we need to get the plan updated by October first. So hopefully, we'll be sending that to you soon, and that is the reason for the special meeting.
Then our special meeting will be August twenty-sixth, 2020, at six PM. There, thank you for the catch, Commissioner Clymer. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.